Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Carpentersville Regular Board Meeting, October 7, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Row call, please.
Trustee Abbott?
Here.
Trustee Frost?
President.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Gupta?
Yep.
Trustee Malone?
Here.
Trustee Maniscalco?
Here.
President Skilman.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the real world, what we stand as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're going to have a moment of silence in a couple of minutes here, but our former village president, Mark Bedeker, passed away last week. Mark's lived in the village for several decades, served as village president from 2001 to 2005. Prior to that, he served two terms as village trustee. He also served throughout his time in the village on several committees, including the ordinance committee, the planning zoning committee, and the senior citizen committee. Had that back in, back in the day. Mark also has served on the board at the Providence Point HOA for 24 years. So please join me in a moment of silence for Mark. Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll do the proclamation first. Proclamation, Manufacturing Month 2025 for the Village of Carpentersville. Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of our economy, driving innovation, creating jobs, and contributing significantly to the prosperity of our communities. And whereas the manufacturing sector supports millions of workers across the United States fostering economic growth, strengthening our nation's global competitiveness, and whereas advancement in manufactured technology and processes continue to enhance productivity, sustainability, and equality of life for all citizens. And whereas Manufacturing Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the achievements of the manufacturers, inspire the next generation of workers, and highlight the importance of this vital industry. And whereas we recognize the dedication and ingenuity of manufacturers in our community who have demonstrated resilience and adaptability in the face of challenges, ensuring the continued success of the essential sector. Now therefore, I, John Skilman, village president, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Manufacturing Month in Carpentersville. I encourage all citizens to join in, recognizing the contributions manufacturers and to support efforts to promote careers in manufacturing, manufacturing innovation, and economic development. So, thank you. And Ms. Karen Treska? I want to introduce Karen, if you want to come up, come on up. Stanley Machinery, thank you for coming tonight. And if you want to say a couple of words about Manufacturing Month.
Absolutely. Stanley Machining has been, we're, next year we'll be celebrating 60 years. Yep, thank you. And 40 of those years have been here in Carpentersville. We have been so grateful for the support that this community has shown us as a business and manufacturing as an industry. It is imperative that we continue to promote manufacturing, teach our young kids and their families, including their parents, the importance of keeping manufacturing in the USA, the lucrative opportunities that exist within the manufacturing industry, and all the new technologies that continue to grow within manufacturing and its impact on the world. Stanley Machining is, we have, gosh, now we're four generations under one roof, three, no, still at three, three generations under one roof, from my, my parents who started the business back in 1966, my siblings and I, and now our children are actively involved in the industry. And we hope that other manufacturers within the community follow suit, really reach out to our young people, you know, get down to the elementary school level and begin all of the hard skills and soft skills that are required for such a thriving business. So we really want to thank all of you here in Carpentersville for all the support. And thank you for recognizing manufacturing in October.
Well, thank you. And I know how, you know, Greta's, you know, been in manufacturing for a long time in her career, her past career, and I know you guys worked together on a lot of that. So, and thank you. And for, I know the, I'm pretty sure the board knows that Stanley Machinery does donate to the, our police and fire every year. They're always, he's always giving back. We appreciate that. We want to say thank you, of course. And I know your, I know your dad doesn't want to hear that. So I know he's not watching, that's for sure. So, not worried.
Great. Well, thank you again.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations.
Okay, we have no appointments tonight. Next, I'd like to call up Northwest Housing Partnership, Paula Bush and Michelle Hill, and Mr. Michael Whalen. And Mike's one of our residents, as you guys probably all know Mike, right?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paula Bush. I'm the executive director of Northwest Housing Partnership. And as mentioned, Michelle Hill, my program director, and Michael Whalen, our project manager. And each of us has been with Northwest Housing Partnership each almost 20 years. And I want to thank Carpentersville for your support in selecting Northwest Housing Partnership to be your administrator for the home repair program. Since 1990, Northwest Housing Partnership has provided and administered affordable housing programs. And your program has allowed us to make affordable, quality home repairs for the residents of Carpentersville. So far, we have assisted three homeowners and one that we will move forward with. And we have currently a waitlist of people who would like to participate in our program. Most of the houses that we're currently seeing need a little bit more work than we are allowed to put in the home. But Northwest Housing Partnership, we just don't go into the homes and provide construction for your homeowners. We also leverage funds from other programs and other services and provide housing counseling to the clients to make sure they're sustainable homeowners as well. Michelle and I both, we are both HUD certified housing counselors, as well as Northwest Housing Partnership as a HUD certified housing counseling agency, along with Michael Whalen, who has a plethora of certifications in the housing industry. And Michelle and myself, we are both whole executive certifications in home modifications. So I just also want to thank you all again for selecting Northwest Housing Partnership. And know that we are working hard for you and making sure that your homeowners have a place to get quality home repairs.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Any questions about the program or anything?
You said you have three so far?
Correct.
Oh, great.
That we're working with. And a fourth that we waited on bids to come back.
With a waiting list, huh?
Yes, with the waiting list.
Wow, that's great news.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you.
We just started this, we just started this program this year, right, earlier this year. So, so we're moving, we're moving well on it. So, yes, sir.
If I could just, just give credit to Northwest Housing Partnership. The village board may remember that going into this year, we had set aside money to contribute towards people who needed some assistance with some of these home, either repair or remodel projects. We actually had partnered with, with two agencies going into the year. One of the agencies, unfortunately, just for other reasons, wasn't able to really carry forward with that. We were actually impressed about a month ago, Northwest Housing Partnership had reached out to us and said, we have this waitlist. Do you have more money for us? And we said, well, actually, we do, because we could basically port over what, what had been set aside for the other agency to, to provide funding. But obviously, they've been doing as much work as we've been able to, to, to support so far, which is just amazing.
Yeah, it's been great. Thank you guys so much. And yeah, we really appreciate you coming out tonight. And hopefully we'll keep this going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Christopherson, you're up. Ladies first, sorry, Jer. I know you're old, but, you know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm here again. I was thinking, we, one of my first visits when I started a true patriots was to visit this village board and ask for support in what we've done. And that was 16 years ago. So at that time, I had planned to do just two tributes, one to welcome home to Vietnam veterans and one for the fifth anniversary of 9/11, excuse me, or the 10th anniversary, rather. And, but I had some flags up over, so we kind of kept going and stuff. And one of the things that we're really proud to do is we honor the veterans when they pass or first responders with flag tributes at the funeral homes or the churches or cemeteries, whatever they want. And we've done over 70 a year for the last five years. And that's, I feel very good about that. So, anyway, I'm here tonight about the Rees Across America. That's December 13. There, this year it's grown to over 4,900 cemeteries across the United States. We'll be putting the Rees out at the same time on the 13th, which is a Saturday. We're going to do both cemeteries in Dundee, east and west Dundee. The problem I have in west Dundee unfortunately is that it's been full for the last 30 years. There hasn't, I don't believe there's been a burial there. And so trying to find families and stuff is pretty hard. So that's what I'm asking the villages to help us so that we can make sure that we can cover every veteran's grave. Last year, we did just short of 900, but we still need like another 900. Excuse me. In the flyer, it says 2,700. It's really 1,700 and something. So, anyway, so I'm here to ask your support again. If you can donate for it and then come and help us on that day. It's, it's really pretty cool because we, the families come and, and children come and we put, we put the Rees on and say a little prayer or whatever for each one, especially the Vietnam veterans, because most of you remember when the Vietnam veterans came home, they were treated very badly. So what I encourage them to say is, you know, welcome home, you know, so they could never hear that enough. So I'm here to ask your support again financially, so that we can get as many Rees covered. We did expand this year to the schools. I made a presentation to the District 300, so they're going to the local PTAs and stuff. And so hopefully that'll, that'll increase it. And then St. Edward's, believe it or not, this year has, has asked for, they're going to have a fundraiser for us also. So that's where we are. And if there's any questions, that would be great. I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we need to register if we want to volunteer?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Do we need to register if we want to volunteer to place the Rees?
No, you can just show up. Even like last year was missing out a little, but we meet at the East Dundee. It'll be on our Facebook page too. And then they move their stuff out so we can have it inside. And they're good enough. They, they post the Rees around the cemetery in boxes. They come 15, I think, in a box. And so then it's easier to go, you know, it's a great relationship with them. So, any other questions?
If I may, Mr. President.
Yep.
I have done this a couple of times with Jerry and his group. I encourage anybody and everybody out there to come over and, and help out. It is very emotional.
It is.
When you don't know somebody, but at the second or third one that you're laying, you're crying, you are tearing. It is, it is quite an honor, Jerry. And count on us, we'll be there.
Well, thank you. Going back to the emotional part about it, the very first event we did was in Carpenter Park where we welcomed home to Vietnam veterans. And we had the lights on that night and I was walking through. And honestly, it wasn't windy, but every now and then the flag would be blowing, you know what I mean? And I thought to myself, well, welcome home, you know. So yes, it's, it's something. And that's why I went really to the schools to get them involved. There is, if the groups can sign up online, if they're nonprofits, and then for each one, they get a $5 rebate rate from the Rees Across America. And so it's a pretty easy fundraiser for, especially the schools, because, you know, they probably have a, a grandpa or a father, a brother, or uncle, somebody that's there. So we're hoping to get as close to covering every veteran's grave that we can. So whatever help you can give me, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Help.
Thank you.
In touch with.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no more. Any other public speakers? No, okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items. The trust, the trustees' request in that, in that event, the item will be removed from the general order of business. And considering its normal sequence on the agenda, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through I.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Maniscalco, a second by trustee Abbott. Row call, please.
Trustee Frost?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
President Skilman.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We have no old business tonight. New business, approval of resolution approving a phase two design engineering service agreement for the Public Works Storage Yard improvements project with HR Green Incorporated, McHenry, Illinois, in amount of 104,980. Trust, oh, hi, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, so I guess the title is a little deceiving. It's only, it just says Public Works Storage Yard. That's basically the location, but the improvements consist of drainage improvements, so a paved parking area, some landscape buffers, some material storage bins, permanent ones. Right now, we have just a temporary concrete bins, a fire department training facility, which is a big one, and modifications to the fuel island, our fuel islands. The actual dispensers are going on 15 and 25 years old themselves. So we're looking to do improvements there. And a site preparation for an additional salt dome or salt barn. Currently, we're using the old street garage for additional salt storage. So the good thing about this project is the three big ones are the salt storage, or the storage yard itself, the fueling station, and then the fire department training facility. That's something that we're going to design where we can actually pull one of those pieces out and bid them separately, basically. But we want a plan in place so we can have turning radius for trucks to maneuver, bombers to haul out spoils, street sweepings, whatever it might be. So, so essentially, one big project for the design, we'll be able to piece it apart and bid out separate components of the, of the project.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, is this, I'm sorry, Director Gray, is this improvement to what we already have, or it's a new thing?
Yeah, it's an improvement. We already have, we store tree debris. So it's additional salt dome. So right now, we have, we have a salt barn out west that we found out this year holds about 1,200 tons. We have a salt barn at Public Works, but it's kind of undersized. It only holds 600 tons, which the east side of the village is where we actually use more salt. So on average, we go through about 2,800 tons a year on average, not the last three years, but that's on average. So that's why we're storing salt. So, so we're not going to construct a salt dome as part of this. It's just building a pad, basically, for a salt dome at a, at a later date, basically.
Okay.
But to answer your question, yeah, that's, this is where we're storing spoils, street sweepings, a tree debris. What else do we store there? Our dumpsters, basically, are back there as well.
So this is kind of behind the building, correct?
This is to the south, yeah, southeast corner, basically, of the Public Works property.
Or the school.
Yep. Correct.
Thank you.
And we are planning to use some spoils to put birmingham around it as well. So we have some sort of screening for it. And then it'll be a landscape berms, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm looking for a motion on letter A, new business.
I'll motion to approve letter A, new business.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Malone, second by trustee Abbott. Row call, please.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maniscalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Yes.
President Skilman.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Manager Stewart?
Oh, thank you, President Skilman, Board of Trustees. Want to thank everyone who participated in and volunteered to make our Fall Fest and the Fire Department's 110th Anniversary Open House successful. Both went very well, were well organized and appreciated by the community. Thanks to the village board. I know most of the board was able to attend one, if not both of the events, the Special Events Advisory Committee, Public Works, the Police Department, and of course, the Fire Department, especially for the open house, and Greta and Jen, as always, for making these events amazing. I'll defer to trustee Maniscalco for more details, but the inaugural Spooky Sprint trunk or treat event is coming up on Saturday, October 25th, from 9 until noon, at and around Carpenter Park. Public Safety, kudos to our Police Department and Chief Shaver for completing the Step Traffic Safety Campaign. It was a year-long campaign, which resulted in 405 citations being issued and 24 arrests being made through federally supported program funding, with particular emphasis, including traffic safety on impaired driving. Financial update, the budget process continues. Thanks to the village board and the Audit and Finance Committee for the further input last week at the combined meeting. Staff will continue to work on the department and capital budgets, as well as revenue sources, which will be presented at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting scheduled for October 27th and 28th at the Public Works Facility before the budget is submitted to the village board for consideration of approval in November. Following up, one of our officials, trustee Frost, had asked for some additional detail as to the other tax category that was showing on some of our revenue reports. Just at everyone's dais is a breakdown of what those revenue sources are individually, what we budgeted for the year, and where we are year to date in those subcategories of that, of that other tax column. If you have any other questions, I'd say direct them to me, but actually, just give them to Ben. That'll be even better. The, but no, seriously, if you have any questions, let us know. And then Urban Street Group will be meeting in the two-by-two sessions with elected officials two weeks from tonight, October 21st, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, before the next board meeting begins. If you've not already signed up, several of you have. We still do have openings at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, and 5:30. Nothing formal will be presented that evening. The idea is just to allow the village board to review the most up-to-date concept plan, ask any questions of the developer, and that, so that all takes place prior to a development agreement being drafted. Speaking of development agreements, Horizon is ready to finalize the redevelopment agreement for the Iron Flats Project for village board action at the October 21st village board meeting. In the next week, staff will recirculate the updated redesign plans, which are the same as presented a few months ago, as well as the proposed redevelopment agreement. Want to also thank and acknowledge District 300 for approving the ratification of the 2022 intergovernmental agreement with Olive Street regarding the payment contribution towards tuition of any school-aged children that would be generated by the apartments at the Iron Flats Project to ensure that money does go to the D300 school, or district, I should say. I'd invite any board member with any questions about the items still being discussed to reach out to me directly to review any and all of the background of the proposed development and the incentives. Both these development projects would have planned construction start times in early 2026. And I want to thank the board, staff, engineers, attorneys, who have put us in the position of having annexed 275 acres of new territory, established a new TIF district, and are on the verge of having two developments add at least eight new buildings, over 400 residential units, and over 1,000 new residents with millions of dollars in projected increased EAV, not only to our community, but to the other units of government in our area on the longer term. In addition to these projects, we are in preliminary discussion with two different senior housing developers, considering 40-plus unit new building developments on the eastern side of Randall Road. And there is recent interest in a new building development at the location of the former Arminetti Store on Huntley Road. So we're excited to see, hopefully, all these things keep moving forward. Good news, bad news on the Riverfront Park project. Good news is, we thought we had an obstacle and found a way to break through it last week without incurring any additional cost with some of the, the soil disposal. Actually, Director Gray was talking about that berm at the Public Works Facility and the new redesign. That actually plays into that because that was part of the ingenuity of our staff and engineers that we'd actually be able to utilize some of the spoils from the east side riverfront parking lot to be part of the base of that, that Birmingham at the Public Works Facility. The not-so-good news, we did have bid opening on the west side portion of the project this morning. Unfortunately, we had one responsive bid, or better said, we had one bid submitted that came in at $3.5 million over our budget of $4 million for the west side improvements. We attribute this more than likely to timing, more than the actual cost estimate of the project. So we are likely going to be presenting the village board with a motion to reject the one bid that was received and redefine the bid package to go out. Just being very candid, this may push back the construction cycle on the west side portion of the project, but we're going to evaluate everything. And obviously, we want to get it done, and we want to get it done in an economically responsible way. So more to come on that. Final note is, I am going to be in the Florida Keys in about 24 hours through Saturday. So I will not be in the office. I will have some access to email and phone, but I would ask if anything can, obviously, wait for next week. I will happily address anything at that time. Otherwise, if there is something of a more urgent nature, Carrie Sichon, our Assistant Village Manager, HR Director, will be in the seat during that time. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody?
I got a hurricane going your way.
A hurricane?
Another one.
I hope not. Oh my gosh. Okay, trustee committee reports, trustee Maniscalco.
First off, I want to congratulate Jen Hyden, Greta Salamundo, for all their work on both Elgrido and the Fall Fest. There was some bad weather. We can't control that, but a lot of people were out there for, during the day before the weather rolled in and saw a lot of smiling faces. So I think it was a well-received event. Next up, we have the Spooky Sprint and Haunted Happenings, which is October 25th from 9:00 AM to noon. It's going to be a 5K race, right? And then there's going to be a mini monster dash for the, the little ones to run. And then Pet Parade as well. Also have a trunk or treat where we'll have a, a few different organizations out there, you know, having candy for the kids. So we're encouraging everyone that's going to run in it to wear costumes. So it should be a lot of fun. Also want to congratulate Chief Anishavitz for the event that we had celebrating the 110 years. Great event, so much turnout from the community. Saw so many smiling faces with the little ones. They had so much fun out there. And I think, and it's not too early to start thinking about Winterville, which will be December 6. which will be, uh, December 6th, and it coincides with the Riverside Lights Parade. It's a prime location to see the parade, um, and we'll have Santa out there as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Gupta?
Nothing from me.
Trustee Frost?
Uh, thanks to Karen and Stanley Machinery. Uh, they've been here for 40 years. It's, it's amazing. It's, they've been supporting our community for that long, and, uh, just thanks to all our Seaville manufacturers. Um, they might not get all recognized, but, uh, we appreciate everything that they've done for our, for our village, just being here for any, if it's a, a week or 10 years. Just appreciate them. Uh, Northwest Housing Partnership, fantastic, uh, for what they do for our community and us helping them out. That's great for our board and our village. Um, congrats to our three, uh, Volunteers of the Year from the King County Chamber Event on Saturday night. It was fantastic, great time. Um, it was good to, uh, see that crowd, too. It was full house at, uh, Holiday Inn in Elgin. Uh, the open house, open house, uh, for the Fire Department was, uh, was awesome. Uh, the weather was fantastic. I mean, the crowd was great. Everyone I talked to, when are we doing it again? You know, one of those things, of course. Mom had a blast. Yeah, yeah, a little warm for her, but you know. Um, thanks to Brad and Ben for the, uh, the report. Unfortunately, um, I'm a little older than you, too, and the, the font appears to be rather tiny. No, I have mine.
We can send that to you electronically, trustee Frost.
For future.
I had to use the glass.
And, uh, that's, that's just about it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Abbott?
Uh, not much. All the festivals went great, and, uh, and I appreciate that. I was unable to make that, and I'm sorry. I missed, had to miss that, but, uh, Fall Fest went great, and I know that went great, and Carter was doing, we're doing great, and I'm happy about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Malone?
I actually have something. Uh, about two weeks ago, Manager Stewart and Assistant Manager Sitjohn and myself attended the Illinois Municipal League, uh, conference, I guess, I guess. So Manager Stewart attended the attorney meetings, and myself and Ms. Sitjohn attended a whole day of TIF meetings. She made the first one. I was a bit late and didn't make the first one, but it was all day. Uh, dozens of presenters from different municipalities explaining how they use TIF. If you don't know what TIF is, that's Tax, Tax Increment Financing, which is where a municipality can help a developer get started. Uh, lots of really good information. Uh, the thing I did hear over and over from every single presenter, pay as you go. Not one person said pay upfront, not one all day. So remember that. That sets a very bad precedent if you pay upfront, because then no one will do anything without getting paid upfront. That's what I learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia?
Happy birthday to the Fire Department, and does anybody know how old is the Police Department?
175?
175? Got to throw a big party, chief. That concludes my questions for tonight.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, um, yeah, on the 25th October, we also have, uh, Mark Becker's, uh, memorial at 10:00 AM at Miller Funeral. Oh, no, it's at, uh, Church, Church and East Dundee. I'm sorry.
Lutheran.
We'll get that information out, man, Lutheran, yeah. Um, so if any, everybody can try to stop by, or anybody can make it, please. I know we got a lot going on here. We got trunk or treat. We got to set up for, and while they're doing their 5K stuff. Um, so yeah, please, um, yeah, Saturday was great. Everybody got lots of great comments. Open house, thank you, and the events were great, and, uh, yeah, awesome. Keep up the good work, everyone. Um, with that being said, anybody have anything else for us?
We have the memorial service on the 18th for the, the three children.
It is. Yeah, it'll be, uh, October 18th, that Saturday morning, uh, beginning at 10:00 AM. Um, the village board will receive, uh,
Invitation.
Invitations for that, uh, just based on the sensitivity to the family. Uh, we're, we're trying to keep it in a pretty low attendance. Um, so if there's 10 village officials, that would probably be about all that, that would be there, and in addition to whoever the family would, would choose. Uh, our chaplain and, uh, pastor Zelinski will, will be officiating, uh, the, the memorial at this point. Uh, but it'll be, uh, trees are being planted. Uh, we actually got the memorial plaques. Uh, they, they look very nice, and obviously, it's tragic to even think about them, but, uh, I think they're very appropriate.
Right.
Well, thank you. Okay. Um, we have no closed session tonight. We have no other business. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.